reunion, Board of Directors meeting Wednesday, October 28th, approximately 4:30. I'd like to welcome the folks from Arlington or Sandgate also and read the agenda for approval. Item one is public comments. Item two, finance and operations related, which will include the Treasurers' report and a middle school upgrade review. The consent agenda, there are no policies this evening. The superintendent's report, the chair's report, other matters to be brought before the board, and for your information, the budget status report is included for September of 2020. I would like to make one correction on the agenda, if I may. Under the superintendent's report 5A, it says succession plan. I presume you folks are not seceding from the school system. That probably should be succession plan? Thank you. Is the agenda acceptable to those present?
Yes.
Seeing no other objections, then we'll move on to public comments. And Sarah Perrin has just added in, Richard. Along with a couple of phone numbers that I don't recognize. Are there other-
Uh, Richard, this Scott McInerney is in. I don't know whether it showed up.
Sorry, Scott. I don't recognize the phone numbers. Public comments. Ah, Jean.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Um, can, can someone just clarify the warning process for not only your meetings, but the other board meetings? Where are they warned? When are they warned? And what are the regular nights for meetings and times? I know this is an unusual time. And there used to be a list of community members where if you wanted to be forewarned of things that were going on, there was, you would receive mailings. Now, maybe it's an email. I'm just wondering what the, it's been a while since I've been really paying close attention. So does anyone have that information? And if you don't, you can, you know, just get back to me.
Maybe I can help a little bit here. This is, these are all special meetings because they're warned out of the normal timeframe, which is 7:00 PM on the last Wednesday of the month.
So normally, SVSU is-
At 7:00 PM at the middle school last Wednesday of the month.
But are they, is 4:30 been the normal time, or is 7:00 the normal time now?
We're, all of these are special meetings, and 4:30 is, is simply that because of the Zoom format. I think it's easier for people to get together during that time.
Okay, so for the, for the, however many months, they're going to be at 4:30 the third Wednesday, or the fourth Wednesday of the month?
Uh, I, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I answered the rest of the question, though, and I don't know how to answer that about emailing people for, for early notification, members of the public. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, and the other thing was how, where and when are the meetings worn? And when do they start appearing on the calendar on the website?
So Jean, I'm writing all that down, too.
Great. Does anyone-
Do you have those answers right in front of you, Laura?
I don't have them right in front of me, but Jeanie, I wrote them all down.
Perfect.
Laura, I can, I can kick in and tell you that we always have them warned on the Friday before the meeting. So our, our warned meetings are typically, for most of our boards, but specifically speaking for the SVSU, because it's on a Wednesday. It'll always be warned by that Friday, possibly Thursday if we have it by then, but no later than Friday. And sometimes we actually have an amended agenda that could come out, you know, with the days prior to the meeting with updated information. But it's always posted to the website, and the, the agenda's there. The Zoom link is included in the agenda, as well as a link to the packet documents is also included on the agenda as well.
Okay, so it's not in the paper or anything like that?
It, it does get sent to the paper. I don't know if they print it.
Yep. And when are, are the MAU, when are the regular MAU meetings? I know they used to be Wednesdays, the third, second Wednesday?
The third, third Wednesday of the month.
Okay. And what about the, I can't remember the acronym, the other, the elementary school board?
SVUESD is the-
First Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And what are the, are those, are those both at 7:00?
Mount Anthony is 7:00.
I think we, they, when they were regular board meetings, they were at 7:00. Once we went to Zoom on those, I think the last one was 4:30. Is that right, Jayla and Scott?
I think this last one was 5:00, but I think that they're around 4:35-ish.
Is there a reason no one can settle on a time? Because it's really difficult if you're planning on attending and you have it kind of on your calendar and the times are constantly changing?
We haven't tried to change any of the times once we've gone to Zoom. I think there's only been one occasion where one of our board members was critical of the process, couldn't attend, and we changed it by half an hour. But other than that, we've stuck to that.
Okay. Has MAU been consistently at 7:00?
I can't answer that one.
Okay. And the, and the, and the elementary board, I don't know how often it switches. It's just really difficult. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. And that's why I would love, if there is such a list, I would love to be put on that list. Otherwise, I've got to remember to check the warning, to make sure the time is the same. And it's just difficult to plan. I'm sure it's difficult for you guys, too, if the meeting time is not set and you can't, you know, count on it week, month to month.
So since, this is Scott McInerney, like with the, with the ESD, since we've gone to these remote meetings, I can't recall it changing from 4:30, and that's been since March?
And, and that's the SVSU, right?
No, that's ESD, the elementary.
Okay. I thought Jayla just said-
But they've all been consistent.
Okay.
Uh, no, they, they've been changing depending on whether that, there were issues. And so Mount Anthony moved from 4:30 till later at one time and back and forth. So we haven't changed the official meeting, but we've called, I mean, these things have been special meetings because of things that have come up. And so they've set it so that it could be more convenient since everybody's at home is what their scheduling. We could ask everybody to take a, a stab at setting a meeting, I mean, voting to change the meeting for a certain time, vote Mount Anthony and SVSU and all the rest of them, and have them be set on the calendar that way.
Yeah. For public participation, it would really be helpful if every attempt could be made, made for the time and date and the day of the week to be consistent. That's all.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah. You're muted, Sarah. There you go.
Yeah, thanks. So I guess just to go along with that, is there currently a list? I, I also have that same problem trying to find it. And then I guess, you know, like the town website, it's not terribly intuitive. So I did have a little difficulty in finding that. I wanted to know if there's a list, and I would like to be placed on that, because, you know, we all try to plan our day, and I see you're all planning your days as well. So I, I'd like to be placed on that if there is one. Thanks.
I'm not sure it would be very easy to create that kind of list, but the website, I, I am probably the most computer illiterate person on the screen today, and I can navigate that website to find the meeting timetables. I will double check on that and will make sure that it gets set on the calendar so that folks can get a look at that without having to do a lot of research. Will that help?
I hope so. Thank you.
Are there other public comments? Seeing none. Finance and operations, we have a Treasurers' report, an updated one from August, and a September one, both from 2020. I'm not sure what created the update. Maybe Renee can answer that one. I don't know.
I think that was the one where the date was incorrect. So she just had to fix one of the hackers.
Oh, yeah, that was my fault then. Okay. So anyway, we need to accept the Treasurers' report for August 2020 and September 2020. Is there a motion?
No move.
We have a motion from Ron and a second from Leon?
Leon.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding the Treasurers' reports? No. I see a light, light up there. So, okay, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an opposition, Jayla? Okay. Or abstentions?
I'm in trouble with my mute button. I was trying to say aye, and I didn't get to it in time, but aye, and I was not opposing.
And no abstentions? Motion carries, reports are accepted. Middle school refrigeration upgrade review, upgrade review.
I can speak to that one, too. For those of you on the MAU board, this is going to be slightly redundant because we did bring this to MAU last week, looking for authorization to place an exterior walk-in at the middle school. But I'll, I'll back up so you all know. Adequate refrigeration has been a challenge at the middle school for a number of years because the middle school is what we consider our production kitchen. So, you know, the kitchen runs normal operations for the middle school, all the catering, and then also all of our summer food service programming. Since COVID, the middle school has actually been preparing all the meals for all of our students throughout the entire SU. So that equated to about 1,300 breakfasts and 1,300 lunches on a daily basis through the spring. So it, refrigeration definitely became much more inadequate at that point. We ended up borrowing a couple of reach-in refrigerators from some of our other schools and placed those at the middle school. Those of you that know these big refrigerators know they don't like to be moved, so they're not holding up very well. And eventually, we're hoping that our, our some, our school kitchens are going to reopen once we end up with more students back in the buildings. So we will need to return those refrigerators back to their respective schools. So presently, the, the middle school production kitchen is still preparing all the meals for all of our students, so all the breakfasts and all the lunches, although it is being distributed via pickup at the middle school on a daily basis. But the Abbey Group is also running meals to all of the schools every day for the students that are actually in attendance in schools each of those days. So through the Corona Relief Fund, the Agency of Education has set aside some CRF money for food service equipment. So I submitted an application for two new two-door reach-in refrigerators, and then also one exterior walk-in refrigerator that is slated to be installed at the middle school. So last week, the middle school gave us permission to actually install that on their property. So the reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is because we actually need authorization to spend money to actually have the construction of that exterior walk-in. So it will be accessed from the exterior of the building, but also from the interior of the building. So there is some construction in putting a concrete slab, some electrical, obviously cutting out the wall to be able to install the door, so it goes directly into the kitchen. We have received approval through the AOE and actually confirmation from the Agency of Education Child Nutrition Program that it is an allowable cost to spend food service money for the equipment and the construction costs. And the reason we're bringing this to you is because the SVSU is responsible for that food service fund. It is at the SU level. So we just need approval from the board to be able to expend funds for that construction, which we anticipate not to exceed $15,000. And in the event that the grant isn't approved, again, we have confirmation from Child Nutrition that we can use those food service funds to also pay for the equipment. And then just so you're aware, thankfully, our, our food service program runs a surplus every year, so it's not like we're, we're in a deficit situation. We don't end up subsidizing the program. So we do have surplus funds that we'll be able to use for this work.
So we would ask for a motion, if there is one, for an amount not to exceed $15,000 to upgrade the refrigeration at the middle school site and all attending construction needs? Is that correct?
That works. If, if you wanted to roll in, you know, in the event that the grant is not approved, which I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be, but if you would also allow us to expend the funds for the equipment in the event the grant doesn't go through, that would be great.
So do we have a motion to that effect?
No move.
I, I think I heard a motion from Leon and a second from Ron.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposition or abstention? The motion is approved. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
The consent agenda includes minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, nominations, and we would ask for a motion. Did I hear a motion? So move by Fran. Is there a second? Second from Ron. Discussion. I have a couple of questions. Leave of absence, I noticed that there's John Habich, and I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, that is taking a leave of absence to cover for somebody else still in the same education system. I guess I was confused by that.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
Human Resources, yes. So yes, he is a current employee of the MAU as an intensive special needs, but he is taking a leave of absence to take a long-term teacher assignment for a teacher who's on a leave. And so he is, he has a provisional license to teach that subject. So he's taking a leave from his role to take that long-term teaching subposition.
And that's considered the more important use of his skill?
That was, Principal Payne felt that having the classroom teacher, given the circumstances, his role primarily deals with, with student behavioral and kind of other issues. And so due to the reduced number of students in the building, he felt that having a classroom teacher was the more important role, sorry, excuse me, was the more important role. And so, yes, transitioning him into that, he was unable to find a, another long-term candidate for the-
Thank you, Nick. And, and one other question I had on retirements. I know there used to be a retirement get-together with a dinner and for long-term people, there were letters sent. How's that going to be handled in our current situation?
That's a very good question that we have not discussed at this point. You're right. Each year, we do a really nice dinner. We did it at the middle school last year. It typically takes place in May, so we have a little time. I don't know exactly what the landscape looks like in May. It's a really nice event, you know, catered by the Abbey Group. One would hope that we'll be able to do it this spring. I guess we have to see, and if we have to do something else, you know, kind of, maybe we can create it that we do, would still honor them, but would be more socially distanced or appropriate. So it would be a shame if they weren't able to get that same honor.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none. The motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Item four, there are no policies this evening, and we move to Laura, superintendent's report.
Yep. Thanks for having me. You're, you had a request at the last meeting around the SVSU succession plan. And so I was going to kind of give you an overview of what that process looked like. It was, it was a great question. We do have a central office plan. We created our plan last March for central office. And what that entailed is we have a Google document. Each department was responsible for listing key personnel, all personnel in each department, listing their key responsibilities. We, we tried to stay really big picture. And then it, the, the task really was identifying who the backup person is. We had to look at the skill set of people, not only within each department, but then in some instances across departments. My example would be, one of my responsibilities is to support some of the grants that we receive. And Renee Gordon, who's in this meeting, is one of my backups for that piece, as is Melissa Senical, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So each department had to go through that process. I have the, the document in front of me. It is 11, 11 pages deep. And what happened at the start of this school year is that's the first thing that we updated. We, again, we were working, most of us are full-year staff. We waited right till after the start of the official school year, and we updated the document again. It's really actually been great to help us even fine-tune our operations and, and to highlight certain areas where we know we need to provide professional learning for staff and how to do certain tasks. For example, we just, we have, we realize through this process, a lot of the different systems that we use to support the function of our work, we need to make sure that we have people that can quickly, and, and the key word is quickly step in and be able to take on that role. What we've done this month is we've gone even to another grain size, and we asked every building administrator to do the same task. And we, for the first time, reviewed that document. Their criteria looks a little bit different. We asked them to create the plan. So who would be your backup person as a building administrator or as a director of a program? Who, who's your key maintenance? Because right now, we know that cleaning and disinfecting is a huge piece of the job that we're currently doing. So who's currently in that role? Who's your backup? And knowing that we have, uh, we have, also have a company that supports us, Janitronics as well. Nurses, we did the same thing. The nurse group has been fantastic in providing support and guidance to our, our buildings. And so each nurse then also had to identify a backup person in their building. And then we also have a administrative assistant column as well, because they are often the key person to the different pieces of technological infrastructure we use to communicate. So that, that's the gist of, of what we currently have in place. I will tell you that all of the directors have access to this document. So it's a shared document that we, as a group, have access to and can hold on to it at any moment. Are there any questions about that?
So if this, if COVID went flying through central office for some reason, bills can still get paid, reviews on interviews and reference checks and whatever else, grant acceptance, research, somebody still has that responsibility?
Yeah. I, that, that is exactly, and I, I have to say, we had actually even started this process prior to COVID. We had really started to, and it was, you know, Superintendent Colkeen that charged us with this task, and it, it had just, so it was, it was easy to actually then really start to build it on March 17th. So it, that's exactly what it does. And so we feel confident. What it, what it has done, Dick, is it, the big piece is making sure that we're providing the right professional learning for the staff so they know how to perform a certain task. And so that's the piece that we're, we will always be working on, and that we, that's a work in progress. But we, yes, we do have names, and we are making sure people are getting the training piece for that.
Thank you, Laura. Are there other questions, other input?
Okay, so the, the second piece is Renee Gordon and Nick Gault are going to give you an update about the merge of Arlington and Sandgate to the S, under the SVSU umbrella.
Nick, how is the baby doing? Do you want to go first, or do you want to go second?
I'm actually about to hand off. Do you want to start?
And I really am here. So we, I should say, I, myself and Marcia Noyes have been working with Power School to get our databases, actually get access to our databases, which just recently happened. So now we can really kind of keep the ball rolling. Marcia is working on getting our supervisor union core users set up in eFinance Plus. And then our next step will be to be setting up the school users, so from Fisher and Arlington School, getting them set up in the system so we can basically mirror, you know, what, what the process is for purchasing approvals for, you know, payments of invoices and whatnot. I've also been working with the agency on getting our chart of accounts, or the, the two sets of chart of accounts migrated over to the new uniform chart that the legislature mandated. Sandgate is pretty much all set. They ran that through their error checker and it grew with no issues. I got an email this morning that they ran Arlington's through, and there are some conflicts. So I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. Hopefully, I'll be able to square it away. If not, I can reach back out to Bob Mason. Bob and I have been working pretty closely together on getting this situated. Once I have that set, I'm going to kick that back to him to use budgeting this fall. So once the budgets are set, we'll be able to migrate that back into the new system, and we'll be ready to hit the ground running July 1. The next work that I'm going to be doing is, you know, the SU costs and kind of melding all those together. Sorry. A little bit of noise behind me. In addition to getting our SU costs set up, we'll be pulling vendor lists from the existing Infinite Visions system. And thankfully, we have access to that already with the operations that we have going on that we're sharing or supporting the BVSU with now. We'll also be pulling the employee lists to get those migrated into eFinance, and then setting up our deduction tables, rate, and all that fun stuff. And then the, the final thing that I think I, I want to start working on is, we have our new HR and finance clerk that recently started. So I'm going to have her begin to cross-train on accounts payable. So once we go live with Arlington and Sandgate, she'll be ready to take that role on. And then we'll have more cross-training, too, than in the event, you know, somebody gets sick, or we have a resignation, retirement, whatever, I'll have at least three people in the office that'll be able to run accounts payable. Pretty much it from the business office.
And that, that, when that happens, depends on when all those, all those databases are moved around and, and into the new system? Is that-
The, the agency assigned us to what they're considering Round 6A, which means we are scheduled to go live on the system July 1, July 1 of 2021. So the, the existing SU as it is today with Mount Anthony, North Bennington, and the SVUESD, we went live July 1 of last year, and we had a six-month implementation window to do that. This is actually a 12-month implementation. So we have a lot more time for two databases that are, I think are going to be easier to manage because they're considerably smaller than the SU, Mount Anthony, and SVUESD. I think are going to be easier to manage because they're considerably smaller than the SU, Mount Anthony and SVU E S D. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think so. It's finances are, are over my head. So I just rely on some experts someplace and input from Nicole and Matthew. I don't know if they're connected to this yet or want to make any comments about it, but.
I followed Renee. I pretty much followed your process. It seems to make sense to me at this juncture, so I'm good with that.
I guess you're up, Nick.
Yeah, my, my update will be much shorter. You know, we, we haven't yet become involved heavily with e-finance plus implementation. Certain point, you know, we'll start uploading Bay data, data, all of, all of those. Our work. I'm assist Renee in the small piece of that that we have. In terms of what we're doing right now, updated similar to the one I gave previously, you know, we're continuing to process payroll. You know, do various reports, just with the audit process. Various things, you know, we filled in a few questions and assisted with a few, you know, benefits related or HR related things, which is nice. We've spoken with Bill and Bob Mason about making the transition, well, retaining health equity, which we've decided we're going to do on the benefit side as we. I don't know if folks know that Health Equity, which was the provider of our H R A and H S A accounts, terminated their contract with V High. And so it looked for a moment as if all of the school districts were going to have to find a new third-party administrator for our H R A and H S As. But we learned that we could retain them on an individual contract. So we, we're making a, kind of aligning our decision with B V S U and Arlington to retain the same provider. So that's one less, one more item that we're kind of on the same page with and it'll make it easier to transition. So we're just making sure to communicate on things like that to try to stay or get as aligned as possible. I think that's pretty much my update. Everything's going pretty smoothly. It's been nice to have our extra person, Jessica, as Renee indicated. And payroll processing and everything has gone relatively smoothly.
Thanks, Nick. Are there comments from the board?
Dick, I just had a question if, if the members from Arlington and Sandgate could get access to recent audit reports and a copy of last year's S V S U budget. I'm sure it's on the website. I'm sure I could find it. It would be great if someone could focus me on specifically where to find it. Thank you, Renee.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll send it out to everybody to kind of map it, how you get to it, but I can also attach them as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Chair's report. I get frequent mailings from V S B A, the School Board Association. I just throw this, this number out there because it flabbergasted me. Our dues to belong to the V S B A, the various boards. Am I allowed to say this number, Renee?
Yeah, it's in your warrant, so yes.
$11,932. Just so you know what goes into this. It was a striking figure for me and I just thought I'd pour it out there. The report, not the report, the equity statement that we, I think, discussed at our last meeting. And I believe Scott and others suggested that we sign on to this as a, as a formal thing. Can that be put out as a docu-sign? What's the best way to handle that? And do I have that correct, Scott?
Yes, you have that right.
And is that something that can work as a docu-sign or do you have to have another format?
I cannot, Dick, I can follow with Jim and ask him if it can be done that way? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because, I mean, we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars that way to everything and everybody. And it seems like we could sign on to an important statement like that.
I will.
Easily.
Yep, I will follow.
Tomorrow, I'm, there's a V S B A conference, I guess you could call it tomorrow. So I'll be attending that and tonight later on, there's a Zoom practice session as if we needed more of that. So that I know how to act in the V S B A conference on Zoom. So I'll be attending that. And finally, negotiations, I believe were for November 12th, 4:30 and 6:30, I think Amy put out there. So Leon, Fran and Scott know about that and you can give feedback on that. The only other thing I want to say is that the S V S U Weekly that comes out, I think, is a good format. It's concise and a lot of good information there. So I want to compliment the staff producing that. That's all I have. Are there other issues to be brought before the board?
Well, I got a question for you, Dick. The practice session for tonight, I missed part of last night. What time is that going to be for the V S B A?
Well, I think it's supposed to be at five. I'm just looking at my notes now and I think it's supposed to be at five. So there is a, a Zoom login.
A webinar, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Dick, I just wanted to ask, Nick, I, I noticed that there was an equity, equity coordinator position that had been posted. Is that a new role for the S V S U?
It is a new role and it's actually a repost. Yes, it is, it is a new role that was approved initially, a grant-funded, oh, excuse me, it was initially a stipend position. We've been able to move it to a full-time, full-time role.
Okay.
Actually a reposting. Failed initial. What we're looking for. Yeah.
Great.
No other issues, then for your information, the budget status report is included for September 2020. If there are no other issues brought before this group, then we will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I hear a motion from Fran and a second from?
Leon.
Okay, Leon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Is there really anyone opposed to adjourned? And there are no abstentions. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.